Well, thank you, everyone, for coming again, both the people in person and on Zoom. I will start by same way I started last time. So anyone that was around for that one, I apologize for being repetitive, but but I want, want to make sure everyone hears what I had to say as an introduction. So first, talking about just the process, this is not on any council agenda at this point. We have received it back from the planning commission and we will, we're obviously having these public forums. This is the second of three. The third one will be Saturday morning. And that, that's allowing us to gather feedback, hear from everyone, and then we will take that information, talk about what we've received and look at the plan, make any changes that we feel are necessary. And then the plan will then, at some point, we will set it for a public hearing and publish the plan, obviously, in advance of that pursuant to Alabama law, have the public hearing, and then the council will consider it. So that's, that's the process moving forward. Just a reminder, sort of how we got here, is that we have a master plan for the city. And it was passed a number of years ago. That plan sort of sets out a change for downtown. In addition, we had, we've had some concerns that were raised by the BZ department with regard to our current zoning ordinances for downtown and the sort of enforceability or the workability of those. We had, quite frankly, they, the, the current zoning creates sort of a patchwork or Jigsaw puzzle of 13 different zoning districts. And so this was an effort to bring the downtown zoning in line with the master plan, as well as to make it a more workable and enforceable plan that would, quite frankly, protect downtown Homewood with the development that has come and will continue to come to downtown. We obviously started this process a couple of years ago. And I think through that process, we, we can all realize that there are some things that the consensus has been built around with regard to these. And I'll just go through some of them. One is that development has come, is here, and will continue to come to downtown Homewood. And so we need, and then currently, the developers have a lot of latitude in terms of what they can do with their property. So what, what this, what we're, what everyone seems to agree to, and I, I think by that, I mean, council, professionals, placemakers, residents, business owners, landowners, is that we need to protect the character of downtown. And that in order to do that, we need to have a zoning plan that matches up with that goal. And that's what we're trying to do at this point, is to get one that matches that goal that we all have. As part of that, and through this process, I think everyone has recognized that 18th Street between Oxmoor and 29th is, you know, maintaining that portion of downtown, sort of core portion of downtown, as well as on 29th Avenue between, between 18th and and 19th. That those two areas need to be maintained as close to who they are as, as can be. So what, what that means is, and what the plan currently calls for, is that that will remain two-story, which, quite frankly, is a little bit lower than what is allowed right now. If that it would remain storefront, and that it would not have any residential. And so I know this brought up last week, and I think would be continued, it's something that, that we certainly recognize, and is that we need to make sure that the plan actually, that the language of the plan actually does that. And I, I think that would be part of what we look at going forward. The other thing is, again, development is coming. I think there are, I think we can all agree that there are portions of downtown where development, it would be a good thing. And so the goal is for the plan to push development to those locations rather than out on 18th Street, or any, in sort of what is currently the heart of downtown Homewood. And that once the development gets there, that it has reasonable restrictions and enforceable restrictions. So I think, I think we all sort of recognize that those are the goals. Again, I think it's about making, working with the document and making sure that we, that it actually achieves what we're trying to get it to achieve. So with that, I also want to mention this, that since last week, we've had, I've had a couple of conversations with people, and one that, that seemed to seem to offer some clarity, and, and was asked to sort of speak to this again, which relates to the, to the five stories, and, and why there's five, why the high intensity portion of the plan has five stories in it. Susan, if I start saying this wrong, you interrupt me and tell me I'm wrong. But the reason that, that it's five stories is because five stories is what we have. The building we're sitting in is the prime example of that, which was a building that was that the city participated in, the project that the city participated in. And so if someone, if we, if we limit other places to something below five stories, or at least don't have an area that allows five stories, legally, we run into a problem because we are not treating Homewood landowners, excuse me, equally. We are, we have now said, as a city, it's okay, it's okay for you, and it's okay for us, but it's not okay for someone else. And so what the easy way to think about it is that we've set a precedent. And so that precedent then requires us to where in the, in certain areas to have a, sort of as a floor, we've got it as a floor limit as, at five stories. And that's why it's at five and not at something else. I don't know if that helps explain it or, or makes it more confusing, but hopefully I've helped at least a little bit. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Susan Henderson, who is with placemakers and is the city's consultant on this. We brought placemakers in. Placemakers has a great reputation for doing this stuff. Susan's been amazingly helpful. So I would just ask that Susan give sort of a brief overview of the plan. And then after that, we will open it up for discussion.
Thank you, Alex. Can you share the screen? Can you let me share my screen?
Yeah, hang on. Hopefully, I just made your thoughts.
Yes. So I won't go back through the detail of, of the process. I'm assuming there are many of the same people here this evening. So just jumping to the issue of the primary goal being to preserve and protect downtown Homewood, as Alex just explained, and, and I think everyone agrees on that. There's no doubt about that from anybody who has participated, the, the advocates for the, for the ordinance and, and the concerned citizens. But this is the piece that Alex was just referring to, that it seems like there are two big issues of concern. One is height, and the other one is use. And so the height piece, the, the map on the right, the proposed zoning map virtually reflects the one on the left, if you include the mixed-use districts, which essentially are five stories. And so that was our, that was our minimum for that district, because you have set precedent, just like Alex very clearly stated. Not only that, we're asking those property owners to give up a great deal of height already. One thing that I want to be clear about, I understand there's a rumor out there that the low and medium intensity are also five stories. That's not true. And we'll talk about that in a minute. I think it's a misunderstanding. So just as a quick review, the low intensity, which is all the area like Reese Crescent, all the area west of, of 18th, that is low intensity, and it is two stories. So it is actually slightly less in numbers of stories than you can do right now. The medium intensity in general, and, and areas that aren't in the historic center, 18th and 29th, the general medium intensity is four stories. And then the high intensity is five stories. And as Alex said, you set precedent with both hotels now, and then, most importantly, with Soho and City Hall. So we talked about this before, the consequences of no action. You, you have, in your existing zoning, both in, in your, in your C4B, you have density bonuses built in that permit towers. They just do, and we'll talk about that in a minute. And you don't have any requirement, anything to protect 18th Street from becoming a strip center. That's also crucial. And I think one other thing, because of people who are so concerned about residential, that we need to be clear about, is the way your mixed-use district right now is established, you can do residential within that zoning district, as you can see in Soho. So I think the big topic maybe to start with, that Alex was discussing, was the height issue. And FAR is a funny metric. And in my opinion, it's one of the most disingenuous ones that planners have ever invented. Because downtown, right now, you have a FAR permitted by right, totally by right, you could go pull a building permit of 2.0. And what that means is you can do 200% of the lot area inhabitable floor space. So the lower, this building shows it's a two-story if you build out the lot completely. You could build four stories if you only build half the lot. You can build eight stories if you only build a quarter of the lot. And you can build 16 stories if you build an eighth of the lot. So, you know, most of this just doesn't, it doesn't seem rational when you're trying to build zoning district that will protect character. And so, but this is what you have by right. And then on top of that, in section P, which is your C4B zoning district, on the right-hand side, I just copied out the text, and I highlighted quite a few of the bonuses. That whole list under number three are all of the density bonuses that you can get in that, in that district. So if you set back a little more, or if you have more open space, or if things above the second floor are set back, all of these things start to accumulate bonuses. And that is the interesting thing, is they're cumulative. So it's not this, or this, or this. It's this, and this, and this. So I actually went back and looked that, most of y'all have seen this illustration here in, in the lower part of the screen, which shows, this is what we're proposing in the current zoning map. This is what's permitted in C4B, 11 stories with underground parking. So that's reasonable underground parking and some, some onsite parking. This building, I get to 22 stories with rational floor plates. So that means the area of the, of the story is big enough to actually have an office, a Class A office. And, and if they bought the parcel next door and built a parking structure, you could realistically build that building in downtown Homewood. So the, the the unfortunate thing is you are very exposed to towers. And I know, I know very well from all of my conversations with y'all that that's not what most people want. I would say that's not what the vast majority want, but it's what you're exposed to at this moment. And then Lou, Louis Nacat did this little series of sketches of what your current code permits on 18th Street. This, you know, this beloved heart of Homewood. This is the corner of 18th and Reese, and it's less than the maximum density because it's choosing to put parking onsite. But you can put all your parking out front. You know, you can basically make it like a strip center, and you can do three stories. You can do that today under your existing zoning. You can do, as you see on the left-hand side of that building sketch, you can do blank walls today. It's in your existing zoning. There's no protection. This is your maximum density under your existing zoning, because 18th Street doesn't have any parking requirements, and it never has. So yeah, if you maximized your, your building envelope, you could build this today. And this is what's being proposed for 18th Street, which is two stories and a habitable attic. So the, the difference in the protection that's being built into this new ordinance is, is really quite dramatic. We did talk about this last time, that the code has been through five substantial edits based on public input, because y'all have been very involved, and you've given lots of direction. So adding parking requirements, we did that. We provided the protection of only two stories and no residential for 18th and 29th. And we reduced height wherever it was possible, and as much as it was possible. And then we also originally had required more glass for storefronts, and we've reduced that as well. So those are the big, those are the big takeaways from how the code, the proposed code has evolved under your direction. I think there's one last little point that I should bring up. Maybe I'll just go back and share my screen one more time. Because I think this, this was brought up at the last public meeting, and I just want to clarify it. The question was asked, how many apartment, how many built, how many residential units could be built downtown? Well, the one thing to be clear about is everything that is nor, that is north of, this is basically the only area that is subject to redevelopment, because everything from City Hall to, to the Highway 31 essentially is recent development that that's going to be 30 years out before anything ever happens. Everything east or south of 29th is already fully developed with, with condos and Aloft. The, the one block immediately north of the hotel between 18th Place and 19th Street, that one hasn't faced much redevelopment recently. So if someone could consolidate those lots, that would be a potential area for redevelopment. But I'm just going to look and count. There's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13. There's 14 parcels on, on that one block alone. And someone mentioned this in the audience last week, and I thought it was incredibly important for everyone to be aware of, is there's so many landowners downtown that lot consolidation at the full block level is almost unheard of. And so the incredible amount of concern over potential residential, you have to look at, first of all, what's been recently developed, because it's not going to be torn down. And then, and then how many owners do you have to get to sell their parcels before land becomes available? And, and so just realistically speaking, I think that's a very low impact on a change in character in downtown Homewood. And Alex, I believe that, that would conclude my presentation.
All right. Thank you, Susan. I just realized that I did not get a sheet of paper for people to sign. Someone might go and get one. All right. So while Jennifer's doing that, let me, let me talk again, as I did last time, and as I do, quite frankly, with our public hearings about sort of how this will work with regard to the public comment. The first thing is, we, we want to hear from anyone that wants to talk, and that, that's, that's why we're here tonight. But everyone, I, I would request this, that everyone treat each other like what they are, which is neighbors. Everyone be respectful, regardless of whether you agree with their opinion or don't agree with their opinion. And so please, please state whatever you want to state, ask whatever questions you want to ask, but make, but please do it respectfully. Thank you, Jennifer. If, as part of that, there, we're not going to have any reactions to what is said, good or bad. So no applauding, no jeering, no questioning someone. We're going to give everyone the ability to get up and say what they want to say without, without anyone talking about what they're saying. So please, everyone, if you will follow that as well. Lastly, we're going to let, we have a number of people on Zoom, and, and obviously some people here in the audience. Everyone will get, is, will have one opportunity to speak. And so at the end of that, we'll, we'll talk if there's more time. But I want to be respectful of everyone's time and give everyone an opportunity to speak, and I don't want, want anyone to be able to monopolize the conversation such that, that we don't get to everyone who wants to talk. So, so if you will, just plan on speaking one time and give us, give us what you, what you would like to say. So with that, we will, I'll start with people present in the chambers, and then we'll move on to Zoom in a second. So if there's anyone present here tonight, and then some people were here last time, but if there's anyone here tonight that wishes to speak, please feel free to come up to the podium. And if you will, just write, sign in and, and give us your name.
Beverly, will you write on top of there a public forum? I, I realize I didn't do that. It says committee in May 20th. I appreciate that.
I think that's it. I'm Beverly Bryce LeBout, and I live at 617 Edgemore Drive here in Homewood. And first of all, I'd like to thank council and everyone on staff for all the work they've put into this. I've been following it since the beginning. And, and I will say that, as a member of the BZA, I'm well aware of the problems in the zoning in downtown Homewood, because we've had some issues in the residential areas as well. We tend to make a lot of changes in the code. And we've made a lot of them over the time that I've served on the BZA, because they were needed. Something would happen, and we would find this isn't working. So I understand that. And, and I do want to see it as a more cohesive code, where everyone knows what can go where, and it's not a matter of having to research. Well, you can have a vet clinic here, but you can't have a dental clinic there, or whatever the case may be. It really doesn't make a lot of sense. So I really appreciate that, and I appreciate y'all's efforts at explaining everything. I have some, several issues, but I think the main thing is that I want to say, is that I think the majority of us understand the issues with this, and the issues with the encumbrances on the properties. The problem we have is that the things that are causing this, Aloft, Soho, Valley Hotel, were things that the citizens didn't want in the first place. That we, there was a lot of opposition to the Valley Hotel, but we got it anyway. So the problems with what we have to do now were not generated by us. We were talking earlier about self-imposed hardships on these in BZA cases, and it seems that this may be a city self-imposed situation that we are now going to have to live with if this goes through. And I'm not sure that that's what the vast majority of the citizens want. I'm concerned about the demographic, a demographic survey, the cause of shades to Harvard Elementary, because we're staring at something maybe happening at Brookwood Mall that would also add to the, the load there, the students along with this. We had asked for a traffic study before the Valley Hotel was approved, and we're told that one would be done afterwards, because it would impact the traffic. That and the 18th Street revitalization would impact the traffic flow. We don't appear to be going to have that, and that's an issue for those of us that felt like we were going to get this now, and we're not. And I think too, we had a lot of public input the first time around. Excuse me. Y'all will be familiar with this from the website. And sadly, the things that the people wanted really aren't, for the most part, in the plan. And that's where our problem comes in. You've given us what we didn't want with those, that's gotten us in this place. And now we're trying to tell you what we do want, and we're not getting it again. But that's the problem.
Can I ask a question? What is that?
It's from the Heart of Homewood Plan. It's the top 10 things that the citizens wanted from the public interest meetings that they had before. It's on the website. Improved walkability and pedestrian safety. I guess there's some of that in this plan. Extend the bicycle network. Not so much. Address traffic issues downtown. We're not getting a traffic study. So are we addressing that if we don't know what the traffic situation is? Treat streetscape beautifully. That's a little nebulous. Provide additional shade and landscaping downtown thing there. Provide street amenities, create gathering spaces. That's not happening in this plan. Improve parking availability. And I understand that that, that the reasoning behind the way the codes work with that, but still, that's what people ask for. Create a greener downtown. We're not getting a pocket park, evidently. And current, number nine, encourage a mix of uses downtown. We are getting that, but it's all the way number nine on the list. And that's where the problem with us comes in, is we, we did this, we told you, and we don't feel like we're being listened to. And I would really appreciate it if y'all would take all of that to heart when y'all make these changes.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anybody else here present that would like to speak? Yeah, come on up.
My name's Barbara Wheeler, and I live at 307 Grand Avenue. And I guess my main thing is, I'm kind of confused about what this all is. I got the, I got it from Jennifer. She sent, or she's great about sending our area emails constantly. She keeps us, you know, up on what's going on. But I'm confused, like, all right, so let me, and I think a lot of people are. I don't think it's just me. I mean, I'm, you know, not the brightest bulb in the box, but I will say that I sell real estate here. I've been doing it for 40 years. And I feel like this is something that is going to really impact the value of our neighborhoods. It concerns me a lot. And so let me get this straight. If you're downtown, and you're looking down where Sykes used to be, Homewood Sporting Goods, and all that's on the right, and you're going straight down 18th, this is now going to be, that's called medium density. Am I correct?
So in the plan, it, if it is part, in the plan, as it's written now, which is the same one So in the plan, it, if it is part, in the plan as it's written now, which is the same one from two years ago before any changes were made. That, that portion was medium intensity and it had a footnote in there that carved out that portion of 18th Street and the southern half of 29th Avenue, like where Dave's and 18th Street Orientals fabric, that area. Carved it out to give it its own set of rules. One of the things that we have, we've been talking about is to make that more, make it clear that that is a separate sort of area, whether district, whatever you want to call it, or overlay, or what, however you want to call it, but that it would have its own set of rules in essence that would limit the height to two stories. You could have an attic, but it would be two stories. Right now it's three stories. It's what's allowed, but there aren't any three stories out there. So it's easy to cap it at two. It would require that it be storefront along the roadway, just like it is now. And it would not allow residential so that it would be different from medium intensity in those ways for that section of 18th Street and 29th Avenue.
Okay. Because what I got and I looked at it, it looked like that was going to be four stories.
Yeah, it is not.
According to the map that we've been, is there something new that we can get that we can really put our teeth into?
So in the most recent version of it, and again, this is why we're having this to, to talk about what changes, if any, we need to make.
Right.
But in the, in the text of the, of that version, of the most recent version, this is the one on the website. And I, I don't know if it's the one you're looking at, but I imagine it probably is. If it's the one Jennifer sent you, it is. So the, the text of the plan shows that that area that you're talking about is carved out and has a separate set of rules. It is in a footnote right now.
Okay. And so then what is the plan for, when I look at this and I look at the really dark purple area, it, it goes over to 19th and then part of 18th. Is all of that got a footnote too? Or what, what, I mean, I think what we really need, based on what I saw, we really need to know what exactly is going to happen. Not, you know, and I appreciate these meetings because maybe the input from us is we need to go back to the drawing board on this and figure it out. But until we can really see what is really being proposed, it's kind of difficult to really talk about it or discuss or get concerned or whatever. I think that Beverly made some really great points about the pocket park and all the things that we've been asking for over the years that it doesn't appear that that's going to be here. And I guess, and I totally understand about what it's zoned as now and why we're changing this, but I kind of don't understand why we would put four-story buildings. And I know there are some around and there are about what, five, five-story buildings that we're, and I don't understand why we would continue down that road when everybody's been pretty upset about what is there.
So let me try to answer a few of those questions. One, the pocket park is a, any park is a separate issue. There's nothing in the zoning that's preventing a park from going in or that would, would require it to go in. That's not what zoning would do. That's a, that's an issue that the council can take up at any point. So, so it's not that that's prevented by the zoning. I just want to be clear. And it, and quite frankly, the zoning is not determining what goes on the police station property other than it provides a classification of zoning, just like any other parcel. So that aside, the only, to answer your question about footnotes, the, the only real footnote that I can think of, and I'm not going through the plan right now as we're, as we're talking, but I think the only real substantive footnote with regard to the zoning is the one that we talked about with 18th Street and 29th Avenue. Everything else, high intensity, medium intensity, low intensity shows you, is what it is, right? And so with regard to the high intensity and the five stories, that's what I was talking about at the beginning was we, we sort of are where we are with regard to the height in Homewood. And I will say, you know, I, I certainly wasn't around for this building that, that started it. But I, and I wasn't, I personally wasn't around for ALOF, but I was certainly around for the Valley Hotel. And there were obviously people who were against it and there were plenty of people who were in favor of it. But what we have, starting with this building that we're in, is five stories. So by doing that, and particularly by the, the city government participating in that project, we have created a legal precedent such that if we lower someone below five stories within a certain area, they can have a successful lawsuit saying you allowed yourself five stories, but you're not allowing me five stories, when right now they've got more than five stories that they can build. And so by setting that precedent, whether we, we like it or not, that's the precedent that we have and that we have to deal with. And so that's why there's a portion that is five stories is because we want this to be, the last thing anyone wants is to have a zoning ordinance that's not enforceable. Because that does us no good and the whole thing gets thrown out. And so it's important that it is not only reasonable, but that it's enforceable. And to have it enforceable, you need to have an area where, with five stories because that's the precedent that it set. The, the sort of danger is that if we don't cap it at five and someone builds higher, we may have to go, that, that may be the new floor. And so that's the reason for it. And that's the reason for five.
Can I just add to that, Alex?
Sure.
That, you have a very valid question that, I mean, it seems totally out of context when you look at the map. Why the Valley Hotel block is high intensity when everything else along 18th is medium? But it was because we were mapping, we were mapping existing entitlements. So the city had already given them the right to build five stories for those parcels. So that's why it wound up being five stories. So but the, the fortunate thing is that's a brand new building and, you know, a very nice hotel and redevelopment of that is probably 30 years out or longer.
Yeah, but there are a lot of people here that are going to be around in 30 years. I won't be, but plenty will be.
Well, and I, I think
So we just let them handle it.
And certainly any zoning ordinance is a living document will likely change in 30 years. I think it's true.
Yeah, I would hope so.
In Homewood change, just like any city, zoning, zoning has to be an evolving thing because, because circumstances change. And I think in 30 years, most zoning ordinances will evolve into whatever the needs are at that time.
But don't you think our needs are less than five and four stories?
Well, again, I, I think what our needs are, are to have an enforceable ordinance. And to have an enforceable ordinance, you have to have this area of five stories. And so we can't, we can't just, the government can't just do whatever it wants. And so in order to make it enforceable, if it's not enforceable, there's no point in having it. Because it's not going to, it's not going to hold up and, and then we're worse off than, than having anything. So by having that section of five stories, you are, what you're doing is you are making, ensuring that you have an enforceable ordinance that allows you to put reasonable restrictions on whatever development is coming at any place in downtown. As opposed to not having that, not having an enforceable ordinance and then even the protections for 18th Street go away because the ordinance is just thrown out.
Okay. I guess that answers my question.
If not, we'll talk more. How about that?
Yeah, I don't want to take up any more time.
You're, you're doing fine. We appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else here tonight? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Melinda Williams. Been in Homewood for 44 years, I think. And I have a couple of questions. One, are the videos for the meeting last week and tonight and Saturday, are they online somewhere? Cause I looked and I couldn't find it. I just don't.
I would need to talk to Brian about that. I'm not sure that we.
Okay. I wanted to go back and listen to something Susan said.
Sure. Cause it's, it's not like a regular meeting where there's sort of a thing to it, but I can check into that.
Okay. All right. Yeah, that'd be helpful. The other is, in talking about the precedent for building heights, how is regions not a precedent in that area? I mean, it's more than five stories, which are eight or something like that. So explain how that works.
So as I understand it, and Susan, you, you probably have looked at this more than I have, that that was not a building that the city had a role in? Is that correct?
Yes. And, and it exists under your existing zoning code. So it's enabled by right under your existing ordinance. So you could have, you know, six more regions under your existing ordinance. But if you're, if the city is taking the height, the permitted height down, then what they're being, what, what they're held to for precedent is the building that they were a participant in, which is City Hall.
So in other words, the, the difference in the legal argument from a landowner is not, there's a building taller. It's your building that you participated in is five stories and there, and you can't do for your, for the city what you're not willing to do for me, as opposed to a, a building that was just built and, and the city didn't participate in.
Okay. All right. The last thing I have is Susan said something last week and that's why I was trying to go back to look at the video to, to clarify, because I wasn't quite sure. But I, my understanding was she says there's no requirement in the current zoning for parking.
On 18th Street. That's only on 18th. 18th was exempt from parking in your existing ordinance because those are old historic parcels that are too small really to accommodate them. So parking was never required there.
Okay. So on, in the new, the new proposed zoning, there's this whole section about parking requirements and parking occupancy rates and, you know, that sort of stuff. You know, that shows five, five spaces or three spaces per thousand square feet for retail and two spaces for office and so on. Can you explain the occupancy rate table that talks about, you know, from, from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM? Retail is a hundred percent, but from midnight to 8:00 AM, it's only five percent. How does that, how does that affect somebody who's purchasing a lot? A parcel and going to build on it.
Yeah.
To accommodate what the parking really is. I mean, how do you know?
That, that, there's a spreadsheet that goes with that, that's referenced in the text. So you can plug in all your numbers for how many square feet you have of each use. And then with it, so like within a single building in a mixed-use district, the American Planning Association came up with this table. And it was from, you know, it was from reviewing, doing huge research on when buildings, when different uses occur. And so that allows an owner who has the retail, say maybe retail on the first, office on the second and, and residential on the third to know, to, to have a formula for how they calculate the mixture of use.
Okay.
Because they don't all need the, they don't all need the parking spaces at the same time. So to do, to do a hundred percent for each one would have a whole lot of hard surface downtown when, you know, people were asking for more green.
Well, parking to me seems like, you know, if I listen to my neighbors and friends and live in Homewood, that seems to be the most content, one of the most contentious elements of the whole plan. And, you know, there's been the discussion of why didn't we have a parking study? How old was it? Was it really, you know, applicable to what we have today? And I feel like that's, you know, when we look at the things on the list of people, things that people wanted in the city of Homewood, parking is, is an issue. I mean, we can be told all day long that it's not, but when you try to come down here to go shopping, you know, 11 o'clock in the morning and you're running into lunch traffic for some restaurants and this, that and the other, it really is a problem. And it seems like, you know, if you add more residential possibly, um, you know, to the, what's that, east of 18th? It's only going to get worse. And what I fear is that the, that the locally owned businesses, which I feel are the, the unique factor in our downtown, it's not a bunch of chain stores. I don't think anybody in Homewood for the most part really wants to have chain stores. We want to have our locally owned. I hate to see them jeopardized. I don't have a dog in that race, but you know, I live here and I, I really want for those business owners not to feel pinched because we don't listen to the request for parking studies and parking capability.
Sure. Do you want to speak there?
We actually did a parking study that was part of the Heart of Homewood Plan. So that was the very first thing that was rolled out. Actually, like, I think that was, Susan, was that, that may have been even before you guys were, but it was, it was part of all the development. So we did do a parking study and we actually rolled that out before we started having the public meetings. I understand. I, sure. The, the, the thing that, and again, I know everyone gets mad when this happens. But the, the thing that came out of that parking study was that 60% of the deck is open all the time, that there's always available, there's 60% of that deck is available at all times. I know that's not, you know, I know that's not everybody's favorite option, but that's, that came, that figure came out of that study.
And I think, Melinda, one of our issues is we don't own property. And for us to go to the Shays who own a lot of property, they haven't yet said they're willing to do a shared parking agreement with us. So the parking problem is really a good thing in my opinion, because it means we're getting people coming to downtown. I see the parking problem at lunch. That's the biggest time. Outside of that, if I come downtown, I don't have a parking problem typically. Lunchtime, absolutely. But if you go to Mountain Brook Village, they don't have a parking problem and they're sorry they don't. But we don't own property. And so we're trying to deal with people and ask, we've asked them different properties, will you do a shared parking agreement? We don't, we don't get a yes. And I understand. I mean, I wouldn't do it either if I'm them and they want their customers to park in their parking. So the parking problem is, is a good thing in that that means we've got a lot of people coming downtown. It's a struggle, but one of the guys that, Clark Bailey got up and said, you know, nobody in the room but me has done parking studies, I'm sure. And he said, any place that I do parking studies and places like downtown Homewood, it's always the same. It's a parking, everybody struggles with parking. And unfortunately, we don't own a bunch of property that we can go put parking, create parking lots for. And that's the struggle. And so the folks, some folks think we, we, we got to solve that. The city can solve that parking problem. And I'm not positive how we can do it easily, if that makes sense.
It does. I think for the most part, it's a perception problem in terms of the residents don't think the city is, I don't mean here, but this is the perception. Residents don't, don't think the city is listening to them. I say, we have a parking problem. You won't listen to us. You won't go get these studies. You won't, you won't create parking or whatever. And I think from a communication standpoint, that can be proven wrong. Whether you can do anything about it or not, maybe explaining why you can't do anything about it will help.
Sure.
Help people understand.
Sure. I understand that. I mean, the, the police station, you know, Beverly would probably tell you she wants a pocket park there. Others would tell me, God, we need a parking deck there. And, and then others would say, why don't we get better tax dollars and put, put a big development there? So that's the struggle of making everybody happy. But, but I, I, you're probably right. We probably haven't communicated well that we really don't have a whole lot that we can do on parking. But it is a good problem in that everybody's coming to see us.
I was going to ask if you know, I don't know if I'm making this work or not, if you know whether that parking study is on the website? I mean, it was part of the Heart of Homewood Plan and that was the fall of 2018. So it really was.
Yeah, I don't, I'd have to go back and look. I'm not sure if it is or not, but we can figure that out.
Brian, are you back there? Do you?
No, Brian, Brian's not back. It definitely was at one point. I just don't know if it currently is. It probably said. All right. Anybody else here tonight that would like to speak? All right, anybody else here tonight that would like to speak? Going once, go twice. Come on.
My name is Sean Barakat. I live at sixteen sixty-four Beckham Drive in Ward One. I love Homewood and I, like so many others, are tired of being ignored. We told you what we wanted when they did the survey and you ignored us. I'm here to strongly oppose the blanket rezone of downtown Homewood to mixed use. The residents do not want an urban Homewood. The survey taken shows what we wanted. I want to offer a different path to blanket rezoning, if that is what the planning commission is forcing on us. There really is no hurry to rezone, but it seems like there is some dire emergency to do so. So let it, let's get it right. Let's do it the right way. I propose an historical overlay district of the entire area that is subject to this blanket rezone that Homewood residents do not want. Put simply, a historic overlay district is a layer of local planning regulation which incorporates the restrictions of the underlying zoning for a given area with the main goal of preserving the historic character of downtown. Decatur, Guntersville, Opelika, Fairhope, these are just a few of our cities in Alabama that have this type of district. Are we starting over? No. By the way, did you know that our current historic commission has the power to designate local districts which include design review guidelines for all properties inside this historical overlay district? If it were created, an ordinance was passed in twenty nineteen, giving the commission the first step necessary to certify these districts. Protection for historic places all over the United States are at the local level. The only way to be able to review demolition plans, renovations, new construction inside the district boundaries are with the local designation, which only the local Homewood Historic Commission can nominate. Homewood can have economic development and preserve and protect the downtown area that we love. The historical overlay district is the only way to move forward without destroying destroying home Homewood downtown forever. I propose that the city council hold off on a vote until historical overlay district can be designed and passed as an ordinance. Only then can we do this urgent rezoning. Let's not be on the wrong side of history. Thank you.
Thank you. And let me just address a couple of those things that you said. There is currently is not before the city council, other than just doing these meetings, because there's nothing to vote on. It's not on an agenda at this point. So I just want to be clear about that. Secondly, I believe sort of that's what we've been talking about with regard to Eighteenth Street Twenty-Ninth. I think you're talking about a larger area, but I think that that is what we're talking about, at least with regard to Eighteenth and Twenty-Ninth. I think I think doing it on a larger area, if we were to choose to do that, would essentially prevent development from coming to Homewood, including those areas where, well, I, if you'll let me finish, I was very, I didn't interrupt you. I think it would discourage and in some instances, prevent development from coming to the areas downtown Homewood that where people have at least voiced to me that they would like to see development. So I think that it is about finding a balance, uh, to your point of having the historic character of Homewood preserved and having the areas that need to be preserved, even as they sort of look now preserved, while at the same time allowing development in those areas where development is more appropriate. And I think that's what we're trying to do here and that that's what we're 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 trying to create a document that does that. I I'll also just point this out about the hurry. Um, I'm not sure that I have heard anyone say hurry. But I do think that what we have heard is that there is a vulnerability with downtown currently. Um, and while I don't know of anyone going out and planning to build a giant building right now, the longer we wait to do something, the more threat that there is that that could happen. That doesn't mean that there's a hurry or not. It just means that the longer it takes us to do it, the more we leave ourselves exposed. But I I think you're right. It it that doesn't mean we should hurry, we should get it right. And it doesn't mean we shouldn't hurry. It does mean that we should consider what's going on and try to move with deliberate speed. But and I think, I think, okay.
Then everybody wins.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else here tonight that would like to speak? All right, in that case, uh, we will move to Zoom. Um, and if everyone, anyone that wants to speak on Zoom, there's a way to raise your hand uh, on Zoom, Ken's doing it the old fashioned way. So Ken, since you you've already done, you you've already raised your hand, why don't you go ahead and speak? And then we'll see if anybody else needs to speak.
Thank you, Alex. Um, good to hear from everybody. And I'd just like to say that I think that the people that spoke for the public did an excellent job. And quite honestly, they're really the people that, um, I have heard exact comments from. I mean, all of y'all did a great job. Susan, one question, what is the tallest building in Washington DC?
Six stories.
No, which building?
Oh, I don't, I don't, well, besides Washington Monument?
Yes, it's the Capitol. And and as the others said, yes.
Yeah.
The Capitol, yeah, the City Hall. Well, that's what I'm saying is like, we always asked for it to be three stories. And we were always, you know, wow, we're going to grant him this, it's going to be five, but don't worry. So as they said earlier in the evening, yeah, we were kind of put into this little scenario that we never asked for. We'll ask another question, too. I was lucky enough to get in touch with one of the judges that I'm good friends with down in Walton County. Okay, Walton County Highway Thirty-Eight. Why are there only four high rises on Walton County that are over X amount of stories? It's because they actually said, we're a city, we can only be sued for a hundred thousand dollars. And we don't want any more buildings that are taller than we can handle. We can't service what we have. So Walton Highway Thirty-Eight, where I have a beach house down there and have had it for thirty years, right on the water, beautiful place, but we don't have any more high rises down there. It's over. Now, I asked the judge about the lawsuits. He said, well, whenever you hear people talk about lawsuits and city halls, that's funny conversation. And he went on and on and on, but we don't need to go over that night. So if you look at Highway Thirty-A and you look at Washington DC, it's in contrast to the conversation. Also, Susan mentioned that Eighteenth Street never had a no minimum parking requirement. Well, first of all, that's not true. It was changed in nineteen eighty-six. And secondly, we've outgrown that parking requirement. We've become this great place that everybody wants to be. But the businesses there, the crown jewel of Alabama next to the summit, ninety million dollars of retail are suffocating from the lack of traffic flow and parking. Jennifer mentions that there's this traffic study, not independent, not an independent person that wasn't a developer did a traffic study. And we can tell you from looking out the doors and windows, especially now that some of the wonderful things have just recently been built. We're locked up. I mean, we don't have the parking to supply the people. Also, Mr. John Harden chimed in, said that we hadn't been that aware of parking or helpful. Well, the ratio for parking, if you go to the summit, it's one thousand square feet for four parks. Our back parking lot for the thousands of square feet that we have is three point five. That's pretty much a national standard. Now, if you want to run tattoo parlors or drunk shops, wherever you want to run, yeah, but for luxury retail, it's three point five. It's three point five is a minimum standard for luxury retail. Saturday, I had some customers that had to park to come pick up some things that they had bought, some very nice families. They had to park at the maids to come get to where we were. And now, look, we have been asking for a comprehensive parking plan in downtown Homewood for over twenty years. Susan has stated in in many videos and things that, you know, that's a totally separate document. Well, how about this? We put a matorium on any building until we can get the proper documents to talk about the comprehensive parking plan that we've been asking for for twenty years. I mean, Ms. Buzzard said a great thing when she said that, you know, nine of the characters that were asked for in the new creation of downtown Homewood, the last three are the only things that are really in this new plan. The first things were parking and walkability and these sorts of things and greenery. So, you know, we're kind of being given what 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 seems to be the case. You've got Highway Thirty-A, as the judge told me, you know, there's all kinds of cases where cities have stood up against overdevelopment. And, you know, the other idea that I just can't believe I keep hearing it, that this is a protection for downtown Homewood. How do, in simplification of the plan, how does adding residential simplify the plan? It it that that's just like pie in the sky thinking. Nobody's going to build office buildings after COVID especially. Nobody's going to build buildings with zero parking. So this idea that they're going to build these twenty, Homewood is a hundred years old. My business has been there for a hundred years. This idea that they're going to build a hundred-story building with no parking, the building would be worth what the buildings in South Side are worth with no parking. A building with no parking isn't worth very much unless you have a unique business like me that only needs about three tickets a day to make a living. Okay, most of these stores on there need more tickets. Yes.
Let let me, let me interrupt you real quick, and I apologize for doing so, but I think, uh, I think we do need to address at least one thing that you said, which is the the scenario that Susan was laying out about building above five stories.
Includes fully parked, yeah.
That that includes parking, just so we're clear, when when we're talking about buildings that high, that includes parking. So I don't, I don't want, I don't want us to get off on a tangent here.
Yeah, we're we're
I also just think that with all due respect to the judge of Florida law in Walton County, I I know something about lawsuits. I handle them for a living and I I don't think you can dismiss them that quickly.
What about Fairhope? What about Fairhope?
What about Fairhope?
They changed their two conditions.
This, does, has the government, has the city of Fairhope ever participated in a building that's higher than the buildings that they have in their downtown area?
They changed, they changed, they changed their two conditions.
No, I used to sit there.
They had, no, no, so they changed their two conditions.
Well, that's fine, but the point is that they did not participate in a building that's higher than the than the buildings that they have now.
Okay, well, let me ask you this question.
Their their limit on height, they did not rise to downzone below a building that they participated in, which is what we are talking about.
Well, can we exercise the conversation? I'll be happy to let the judge call you, Alex, because he said that Florida's probably less liberal than Alabama on those regards. And I'll be happy for you to talk to him. Secondly, Alex, how can we?
She won't call me, she won't call me.
Okay, how can we regulate the entire community but de but deregulate Eighteenth Street? I mean, you're saying you can't do it over here, but you can do it over here. But oh, by the way, you have to do it over here because it's been done.
Because Eighteenth Street is under a different zoning district than the rest of high intensity right now. So we're the the high and the medium are reflective of the zoning that exists today.
Right, which is exactly what the judge was trying to explain to me, is that basically the zoning is controlled by the city. The city's limited lawsuits, the city gets to do what they want to do. I mean, I'm just saying, wouldn't it be nice if the people in the community who have been asking for three-story buildings, been asking for parking, got what they wanted? Well, let's move on. We'll we'll never agree on everything, I guess. Another thing that Ginger mentioned about the parking study, the parking study that was done, from what I understand, was done when Soho was only at about a forty percent occupancy. So I mean, we need an independent parking say that's not done by a development. Look, if Okay, while I'm not aware of that study, I did try to get a copy of it, so I would like a copy of it because I can tell you, I can tell you by going.
Site that was done is the heart of, it's the heart of Homewood, as part of the Heart of Homewood Plan in twenty eighteen was done by the RPC, was not done by the
Okay, well, if you want, I'm a hundred percent with you, but listen to me. If you really want to keep, if we lose, you lose. If you really want to keep the great shops, the friendly people that own those stores down there, then we need to talk about when we triple, when we change this whole taxation to triple net taxation, the way the taxation will affect these soft boards, the way the traffic has already affected these stores, and the way they need one thousand square feet of retail and three and a half parks, which is, you know, John's saying we are greedy, but at the end of the day, there's not enough in Homewood. And that's what I'm telling you, unless you want coffee shops that people just park at and sip a three-dollar coffee hour on hour, end on end, if you really want some of these special shops, the crown jewel of Alabama, then you guys will help us protect the retail and the and and the parking that we've been asking for for twenty years. I mean, we could always go through all these points and push and hurt, pull and all that, but I'm telling you, we need a comprehensive parking plan and we need a matorium on building until we get to a place where we have the right parking. Now, John's company, Shannon Walcheck, they have a lot of agreements and leases, and I think they just took over the Jim and Jim's building. That would be another great place for some surface parking. I think, John, would you speak to, could y'all take that property and sell it to the city for some surface parking?
Ken.
Yeah.
I'm, I I don't want to cut you off, but you've been going for a while and we're on the second night where you've had a comment. I want to make sure everyone else gets a comment.
Fair enough, fair enough.
And so I, let's do that. Um, I I do want to correct one thing. I don't think that John never said you were greedy. Um, I I I want to be clear on that, but let's
Fair enough, Alex, but we have three point five parkings for one thousand square feet. That is not extra. That's what you need to have a successful luxury retail business. And those, that goes for Soka, me, Babi, everybody.
Well, and I appreciate those comments. Let's let's see if we can make sure that everyone gets a chance here. Who else on Zoom would like to speak? And you can either push the raise your hand button. Ah. Marlene Burnett, uh, let me see if I can do this correctly. Hopefully, I'm getting you unmuted. There you go.
Yes, I was just listening to Ken speak and he actually touched on something that I was going to bring forward because I've lived in the DC area, that's the capital of the United States. And those buildings cannot be higher than the capital. So, uh, you know, that was something I wanted to bring up. If we're going to allow, you know, City Hall, I don't know how that happened. I wasn't living here then when that building was was erected. But if we start putting these, the high rises and so forth, Homewood's going to get lost. The 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 sanctity, the the beautification of Homewood in surrounded by high-rise buildings. And I don't think me as a resident and other people as a resident would want to see that. Now, how we get to that point to say that, okay, this building can be no higher than X? You know, to me would be comfortable as it is in our capital of the United States. And thank you, Ken, for bringing that up, because I was just sitting here thinking about that. It just, you know, it just, it just doesn't make sense to me. I'm confused as some of the other speakers have been confused on the plan. I've since, what, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, last year was a blur, and I've attended And I've attended the council meetings. I have not been in person since then. But things change so rapidly in the city of Homewood and we can't get traffic studies. We can't get, you know, the final, what the, what the plans are. But what I do know is that Homewood is quaint. People love to come to Homewood. Parking is such an issue that it just is disruptable. I can walk there, but if I shop, then I'm going to have a problem bringing stuff back to my home. So I just wanted to say that, thank you, Ken, for bringing that up. We do need a height, height limit. And those height limits need to be somewhere so that it's not encumbered. And especially, I live in Rosedale, so we are, we are very encumbered by whatever happens in the city of Homewood. We are getting encumbered and closed out and sucked in to whatever happens. And? That's, that's, that's just my opinion as to why the building should stay at a certain level. It is very, very important to me, as a child I grew up here, to look and see what downtown Homewood looks like. We don't need a shopping center. We don't need that, I don't think. We don't need apartment buildings over the, over the storefronts. They've been there for, like Ken said, hundreds of years. They're doing fine. Lot of revenue. So? I just want to leave it at, leave it at that. We, we need someplace that does not encompass? A lot of, what do you call these franchise stores and so forth? That's not Homewood. We don't want that. And we would really not want to have apartments over top of, on top of these other buildings. That's just not Homewood. It's not.
Thank you, Ms. Burnett. And I, I think you, you've said some things that we certainly will take into consideration and some of the things that we've talked about here tonight. I, I think everyone does agree that, you know, there needs to be some limit on, on height. And that's, that's part of what this plan is trying to impose. And I, I think, I don't know which area you're, you're necessarily talking about, but the area, the stores that have been here for a long time on Eighteenth Street and Twenty-Ninth? This, this plan will not allow to residential to go above those. It, it won't allow having anything above those. And that's so that we can maintain and protect those, those buildings and stores that have been there for a long time. And, and even the character of them if something ever happens to those buildings and what gets replaced. So, thank you again for your comments.
Well, maybe I misunderstood, but I, I do understand that there's a lot of development coming down Eighteenth Street. Like from Golden Nugget. I mean? Rosedale is getting inundated with, let's hide it. And? We have shopped in the city of Homewood, the residency in Rosedale for all our lives. So we would like to be, you know, not hidden? By five-story buildings and so forth. But I, but I do appreciate you explaining that to me. Maybe I misunderstood. But I would like, I mean, the way it looks now is just perfect. For me, I don't, I mean, the hotel is there. It's just like, kind of like you, you run down Eighteenth Street and all of a sudden you got this building. It's like, what the heck is that? Well, it's a five-story hotel building. I wasn't living here when all this stuff happened. But it is really kind of like an eyesore and the parking, the parking is disgusting. I can't even, I mean, you don't even attempt to go down there between eleven and two o'clock. There's no parking.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Burnett. We, again, appreciate your comments. Let me try to see if anyone else has any so that we make sure that we're? Get every, get everyone out of here on time. Anyone else? On Zoom that would like to speak? Please, you can? Either hit the raise your hand button or you can? Do the Ken Shea away and put yourself on screen and raise your hand. All right, going once, going twice. Okay. So with that, let me, let me go back to Susan and see if there is anything, Susan, that? You want to discuss after hearing any comments. I don't know if there's anything that you feel like you need to? Provide some explanation for or not?
Um, yes, I think, I think one thing, you know, that obviously is an ongoing concern is parking. One reason we didn't add parking for Eighteenth Street is it's a property rights issue and Alabama's a property rights state. So if we had, for people like Mr. Shea and others, if we had added parking requirements to them now? After their years of ownership or use that didn't require it, it would, the state of Alabama Supreme Court would consider that a taking. So that piece was off the table, but due to Mr. Shea's advocacy and, and concern about the viability of the retail? He mentioned the three and a half spaces per thousand for fine retail because? The national standard, including Walmart, is three per thousand. That is, that was the number that was utilized for the rest of downtown. So there is retail requirements, there's office requirements, and there's residential requirements for parking. So I think one of the biggest concerns about parking? Was because in the initial proposal, no parking was required downtown because that is a best practice in downtown? Parking management. However, because of the local concern being so clear and so directive? Parking standards were added. And I must say they're higher than, than I think is probably a best practice, but it was because of the advocacy of the community. So that is one thing. Another thing I wanted to just speak to was the open space and streetscape improvements. That is embedded in the code. It is required. There are streetscape requirements for redevelopment. There, there's even open space requirements for redevelopment. It doesn't exist in your existing code. But it came directly out of the community preferences in the Heart of Homewood Plan. So I think there's some things that, you know, aren't always easy to find, but it's definitely in there. And so if you go to the open space section, that's where you'll find the, that requirement. And then the streetscape improvements is its own section as well. So in a PDF, that's a pretty easy search. I think those were the two big items. President Wyatt, that I noted in the course of the evening. That I just wanted to clarify.
Thank you very much, Susan. We appreciate it. And we appreciate everyone being here, everyone that was here in person, everyone that watched on Zoom. We certainly appreciate all of your comments and, you know, want to consider them. And we will have the next one of these this Saturday morning at nine o'clock here in the room. And it will be on Zoom as well, the same link. So? Please feel free to join us then. But once again, thank you. This is part of what it's about. This is why we, we're doing this is because we want to hear these comments. And, and hear what you have to say. So thank you very much and hopefully we'll see some of you again on Saturday.